I do read the two to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was the first time we've all been on in a year.
Really?
That nobody's called in and was about five seconds behind.
Wow, beautiful.
What?
That was awesome.
We should celebrate.
We're not challenging.
Let's test them.
What do you want?
I've never had one since.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Lois Tiley?
Yes, ma'am.
Diane Dennis?
Here.
Christine Newman?
Here.
Richard Horner?
Here.
Michael Nesbitt?
Here.
Kathy Harris?
Here.
And Sarah Tiley?
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear, is there any changes to the agenda?
I would like to add letter D under new business, or sorry, F under new business. And it will be entitled Saginaw ISD Summer Reading Program.
Any other changes? And your motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I support.
Support.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Any announcements or public comments? Apparently not. Uh, let's see. That leaves us to Mr. Spicer. Mr. John.
John, you're on.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody.
Evening, John.
Good evening.
You have a copy of my report and some new information on the water system asset management plan. It does look like St. Charles is going to be in the fundable range for that grant. We can be expecting a notification from Eagle at some point in time because they're going to want us to revise our scope and probably reduce the amount of the grant because we will not have to dig up every single water service in town. They're going to allow us to do a 20% excavation and do a random statistical analysis of those water services. So that is very good news for the community.
Awesome. Well, good.
I would say sometime in the next month or so, we should be getting some notifications from Eagle on that. And hopefully we get some grant money to get that asset management plan done.
Awesome, John.
Any questions on that?
Is that what all of these Spicer trucks are running around town? Is that something else?
That, that, the Spicer trucks in town are the water main project. We are doing a topographic survey right now for the water main project. They should be wrapping up this week, maybe a little bit next week. We're also gathering utility information from all the utility companies, you know, consumers, telephone company, you know, anything that we can get our hands on. We've been pulling records that we have regarding the existing utilities in the area. And we're, we're full bore into the design. So that's, that's gonna be a long time coming, so glad we can get that going.
Okay, thank you, thank you, John.
And the Fulton-Hosmer Street payment, that's not part of what you're doing right now. When, no.
The Fulton-Hosmer payment is, is not part of Eric Construction's contract. That's actually what we're looking at doing with that category B grant application. That would be a 50% grant to get that payment done. And I believe you have a resolution in front of you tonight that needs to be passed, a resolution of support.
Okay. I thought we were just paying for that.
We do have the money, but I, I thought, why not go for 50% if we can get it?
Okay.
That's when I did the research and noticed that a lot of the municipalities went for a smaller amount. Like, we went for Spruce and Cherry last year and the whole shebang. So I thought if we go for 50,000 and 50%, I think we can get it.
Okay.
And we should begin construction on the asphalt side next week.
Okay. Before we get the grant?
Yep.
Okay. That's good. Yes, John.
So that's, that's all I have. If you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
You know, Hart, I had talked to you about the water thing. Should I ask Donald's questions or should I ask John's questions right now before you leave?
Sorry, is the contract? I, I'd probably go with Don.
Okay.
John, do you, do you know anything about Saginaw Water Contract? The Water Authority?
Well, contracts in general.
Okay.
I mean, everybody else's too.
Yeah, other municipalities.
Do you know?
I'm familiar with Saginaw ones, yes.
Okay, he's got my answers, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, John.
Okay, do you want me to stick around for the resolution or are you all set?
I think we're good.
I think we're okay.
We're good. Go enjoy your evening.
Very good.
Thanks, John.
And I hope to see you next month.
And let's schedule something for next week for the final punch list and pay.
Very good, we will do that.
All right, thanks, John.
Awesome, thank you, have a good evening.
You too, John.
You too.
And when he's, when he's off, let's go through phase one.
Has left the meeting.
Yeah, we definitely need to go on.
Yeah, make sure we're doing it the way we want them to.
Move on to the council minutes, approval, the month, come on. Any questions on those minutes?
I guess the only question I have is, did everybody get their bonus?
Very pleased and proud.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome. Our pleasure.
The correction, down after one interview twice, and one should be down at Accra.
Yeah, what?
It's just a correction.
On the others presented.
Oh, okay.
There twice, and one should be down at Accra.
Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Motion to accept.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Not a major big deal, Jim, you do very well on them.
Thank you.
Commission and committee reports. First one's the DDA. Everybody, anybody getting questions on DDA minutes? Next one is the Parks and Commission, anybody have any question on those? Recreation Committee? Next one's the Planning Commission, are there any questions on the table?
That was about a three-hour meeting. So we've moved.
Which then requires anybody prep.
We've moved, we've moved next week, we need up till 6:00 a.m., 6:00 P.M., just so
Okay.
we can maybe get out by nine.
Three hours and 12 minutes.
No questions on the Planning Commission minutes? Do I hear a motion to accept and file the committee minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
I'll support.
Second?
Came from down there.
The ladies gotta speak up, I'm dead.
I'll support. Sarah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So filed, so accepted and filed. Communications. Saginaw County Parks and Recreation. Do they have any question about the communications?
No.
I would just add that I called over to Brian yesterday and they agreed to participate in beautification day this weekend. So they're gonna come out, they redid the sign at the rail trail and Doug and Lori didn't really like the look of what was around the sign. So they're gonna send their guy over, he's gonna blow the trail off with debris at about 7:00 a.m. For the weekend riders and then come over and maybe cut some trees, plant some hostas with us. So a good participation with Brian's forest and Brian over there, so. Very helpful, very pleasant.
John, Don is a bad river, he asked me to remind you not to forget him this year.
Understood.
No other discussion on the Parks and Recreation? Let's move on to payment of claims. Anybody have any questions on the information presented on the payments and claims? Apparently not. Do I hear a motion to pay the?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of claims in the amount of $88,307.14.
No second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. New business, give a water contract, everybody should have a copy of it. Any questions on that contract?
Okay, you know, I was reading this on my phone, I might add, and I kept going, wow, wow, wow. They're going to charge us, or the homeowner that's going to build, an extra $2,000 for a water hookup?
That is only a newly permitted.
New construction.
Newly permitted mains.
Also, if we do an extension, if we annex somebody in and do an extension.
Existing line that does not, not affect.
Okay, and then any industrial, now, does that include our current industrial park?
I, I believe it's anything that's now connected to it. I think that's still only newly permitted mains.
Okay, to get the tax.
Right, and it has to be over 10 employees, I think.
It did, that's what it said.
Yeah.
And if it becomes over 10, then they still have to do it.
I believe that's all on only newly permitted and constructed.
Okay, so the industrial park we have would not count?
Should, right.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is.
I must have missed that part.
This is pretty boilerplate, that's what.
That's what I was wondering.
20 years ago when we did Spalding Township, so it's basically the same thing. And I know LB, even on all their new residential, the city isn't charging those $2,000.
Okay.
Even for all the new main they're putting in, so.
So do you think if it's in a new main within that town, within the village? I don't think we have any place where we don't have a main.
We're all built out of the village at this point, anyway.
And so is Swan Creek.
It probably has more potential to affect James and Swan Creek than it does us.
Because Swan Creek went ahead and did all of theirs.
Right, because, I don't know if you know, but like Myers and Bertrand, all those people pay a half percent city Saginaw.
They do.
Income tax, and then they share that with the village of Bertrand and Bertrand Township.
But they share it back?
A smaller portion of it, there's some, I know they get a little bit, so that was kinda how they.
But that's not in here?
No, I don't think so.
No.
But that's, yeah, a large new business, a new main somewhere, where I have no idea where that would be right now.
Okay, no, I don't either. Okay, I was just, it's not like any of it I've seen before.
No, if we have a vacant lot on an existing main, they're gonna get $2,000.
Okay, or if a house gets torn down and somebody rebuilds, they're not involved in that. Okay, well, I know we have to have this, and I know we put it off for a really long time.
Yeah, it's like, the original wave of contracts was over 20 years ago.
Yeah.
You were probably on all that when the rates went up.
Yes.
And all that good stuff.
Yeah.
But Gary Campbell, I mean, Hal and I, until we, it wasn't, I mean, it was months and months of trying to get them to change stuff. And basically, it's, this is it.
We're just not gonna do it.
They're not gonna, but it is pretty boilerplate of what every other municipality has said. And the rates are the rates, we've been paying the rates they wanted us to pay anyway.
Yeah, we kept the rates up, but.
Yeah, they, they were gonna make us pay the rate they wanted to, no matter what, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Now you know I read it.
You did control. Yeah, I probably heard, I should have hung my phone.
I learned if you turn it sideways, it gets bigger.
Okay. Uh, what do we do, go on to the fire B there?
No, we have to, we have to.
We have to pass these.
Have passed.
There's several things for the water contract, I think.
The Water Service Agreement and then the Urban Cooperation Agreement.
Does the Water Service Agreement, it doesn't have a number or anything on it, right, Johnny?
No, they, they were contracts, they weren't like the resolutions, so the other ones are the resolutions.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to accept the Urban Cooperation Agreement?
Let's call the Water Service Agreement between, so do Saginaw that one?
He's doing the first one.
This one, these two. That's different than the urban?
Nope, well, yeah.
They both go together, don't they?
Correct, the urban is authorized to the city to collect the connection fees outlined in the water agreement.
But we can approve them both at the same time?
I'll do them at the end of the two separate.
Can I get a motion for the Water Service Agreement, then?
I saw move that we pass the Water Service Agreement between.
I support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't need a roll call, and I do it.
No.
I see you didn't have one.
I know.
Okay. Uh, now do I hear a motion for the Urban Cooperation Agreement?
I'll move to accept the Urban Cooperation Agreement.
Support?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's passed.
James and Swan Creek have their meetings this week, so I will get one they signed and bring them, so they're all three signatures on the same.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution 21-8, any questions on that? Or do you have any explanation of it?
Uh, this is for legal services during the USDA rural development portion, whether it's a loan or a grant. Gary Campbell is not, has not done a lot of this kind of service, these kind of services. So I went to Smith Bobble, who has done several of these and has worked with all the same players that we have involved, Spicer, Verdinsky, you know, so the attorney needs to prepare and sign the Michigan Guide for Legal Services Agreement, the certification regarding debarment and legal sufficiency of the engineer's contract, preliminary title opinions, opinion of council relative to rights away, and so they're very familiar with who we're working with. They know Paula from USDA as well. So this is the next piece of, of the puzzle.
Not that my opinion counts, but in the past I've worked with David Meyer from Smith Bobble, and they're, they know what they're doing.
And he's a lawyer from the firm that we would be working with.
And they're the ones that know the bond counsel?
They know bond counsel as well, yep. They work with all, they're currently working, I think, on another municipality, I can't remember which one, with the same exact people, so.
Okay. So we're basically picking up their people? People that they use?
But we picked them prior, but yeah. Yep.
We did pick them before we got Bobble.
Before we got Bobble, yep. I was hoping that Gary could do it, you know, there was a former counsel person who really preferred Gary over others and Gary said he's just not comfortable doing some of those things.
Okay.
Any other question? Do I hear a motion to accept Resolution 21-8?
I make a motion, we accept Resolution 21-8.
Support?
I'll support.
Roll call?
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbitt?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tiley?
Yes.
Motion carried? Sign that for me. Okay. Saginaw Futures Progress Report, or whatever.
We did budget to continue to support Saginaw Future, we had a lesser amount, $500. Previous year was $1,000. I didn't see that we were getting enough out of the economic development side of that, so we went down. I passed, there's only one copy, but it's on the front, if you wanna pass it underneath, Michael, I believe it's underneath your papers to the left. It's, or it's over there. It's their little guide and what others pay, and we're kinda in the ballpark of, you know, Chastain gives 600 and most villages give 500, so. I've called them about a few things, a few of our open buildings, and they haven't had a clue. So finally, we received some interest last week from a shop in New Ulster that'd like to come here. And so had a good conversation with the owner and tried to get him downtown and find him property. And so finally, I said, hey, to Steve Jonas, said, this is your chance. Show me why we give you $500 every year. Here's a group, a brother and a sister, they wanna come here, this is their business, let's get them in here. So he sent an email, a follow-up email to the owner, and nothing since, and that was just Friday. So hopefully something comes to us and we bring another business downtown.
So that's mainly what they, they do, is to help get businesses into the.
Correct, and so on the bigger projects, they'll do like tax abate, they'll draft the tax abatements and find creative ways to get them there.
They, they helped us with the bolt works.
Correct.
Oh, okay. They did a lot on that project.
They'll work with the subsidies, they're subsidizing whatever they can to help bring in business and.
So we are gonna put forth something?
I think so, I think, we'll, we'll see now, we'll see, well, if we go down to 250 next year. Here's the real chance.
What are we proposing to put forth?
500.
500.
They do a motion to do so.
If you go to the back page, it shows what others donate, so.
Well, they already invoiced you for 500.
Is there a motion to, to pay the 500?
I, I move we pay the 500, to Saginaw Future.
Is there support for that motion?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Resolution 29, 21-9, information?
So this is the category B grants for villages. The timing is weird, being as we've seen, we do have the money and the funding to do it, and we, we're gonna go forward. But I was hoping to recoup half of the money next year. Even if we can do that as we begin phase one, because a lot of what they're looking for is combining the work with other projects. Infrastructure, especially if there's, I believe if there's water mains involved. So we could piggyback this one off into another, the next street over as we go through phase one on the old side of town.
No, yeah, with these two, I would.
Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 21-9. Support?
Supported, roll call?
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbitt?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
I took the one that you.
And Sarah Tiley?
Yes, we have one in there.
Okay. Village events, St. Charles hometown day.
Ladies that put it on last year would like to participate once again and host once again. The only difference is they'd like to close down both boulevards. They turned away vendors last year at 33, and so they've had requests for over that already. Event would be October 2nd, which is a Saturday. And the DDA thinks it's a good idea, other businesses in town approved. They did, Tony's and Subway had good business days while people were down there, even though there are food vendors and such. And so they're looking kind of for permission from the village to shut down both boulevards. On Saturday, the state bank supports us as well. And so I thought we'd get approval from the council, move forward. They're working on taking care of the boulevards, as you see, they need red mulch and chips. The DDA approved five large planters, three feet tall, that they're, these ladies are willing to low water and leave, but they're gonna change them out seasonally for mums and geraniums and kinda keep downtown fresh. And so kind of our own little beautification. So I think this is one event that we should consider, or closing down downtown and the village council.
Excuse me, Hart, could you tell me the date again?
October 2nd.
2nd.
The event's from 11:00 to 3:00, so it's, it's not overly exhausting, they're closing down forever. They will be set up at 8:00 that morning, but tear down begins at 3:00. So they raised a lot of funds last year and we're hoping that they'll donate again to the Old Fashioned Christmas Parade and support some of our other endeavors.
Do I hear a motion that we promote this? And approve of it?
I make a motion that we allow them to close both boulevards. I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next event is June 6th. This is something that Sarah and Victoria Deveraux from Deblin's kinda came about that way. And Julie's involved now in the new fire chief, we're kind of a little fundraiser where we'd like to close down the block. Sarah, if you wanna speak to this a little bit, as this was gonna be our undertaking.
So we have a little boy here in town, and he has a rare genetic disorder, it's called tuberous sclerosis complex. And what it does is it causes his body to grow tumors. Specifically, his is affecting his brain, so he has developed epilepsy. He actually almost died a week ago because of the epilepsy. It's also affected his kidneys, so he is in chronic kidney disease right now. He's had several brain surgeries already, and they've already said that he's probably got about another 15 more to go before they can get all the tumors off of his brain. Because it's such a rare disorder, there's one doctor in Michigan that specializes in it. And even then, it's, it's been a task for him, so they've been going back and forth to Tennessee to see a specialist. And the medical costs and everything, as you can imagine, has been pretty intense for him. So we just kinda wanted to alleviate a little bit of that for him and just kinda let him know that we've got their back. We've got a lot of stuff coming in right now, we've got 25 vendors and four, possibly five food trucks coming in. We've got a dump tank, we're gonna dunk Julie and Chief Levens from the Fire Department, so that'll be a lot of fun. And then Deb Woods is doing, her and her other two stylists are doing haircuts by donation only. So we will be advertising that on ABC the end of the month. And then we've got 1036, that's gonna be advertising that as well for us. So hopefully that just brings a lot of people in and we can do some good.
Do you have any questions of Sarah?
So, so what do you want from us, Sarah?
Yeah, look to block off a little bit of Vine Street on Sunday, June 6th.
Okay.
We've reached out to residents and they don't seem to mind, but just like the idea of village approval if we're gonna block off village streets.
I'm blocking off, I'm blocking.
So we'll have the parking lot there by the haunted house, and that's all, like, the food trucks will set up. And then that little road up. And then that little road up will be all the vendors. And then in front of Victoria's salon will be vendors as well.
Okay. So you, you want like Vine and Water though?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Vine and Water to be blocked off for that day.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Curried.
Moving on to departmental report. Oh, no, no, we're, uh, got a little thing stuck in here. The ISD.
So, uh, Josh Miller called from the ISD, uh, this, this afternoon and kind of pressing, or I take it to parks first, but, uh, he and I are working on the Safe Routes to School grant, which we received, but we postponed till next year due to COVID, so that school, kids are actually in school and can be out. Uh, he's, he said, you know, hey bud, got an idea? Let me run it by you. Take it to your board. So he loves our coal miner park. Most people do. Uh, he wants to use it for their literacy and movement. The ISD is, is in our school already with healthy body, healthy minds. And so his idea is to put yard signs throughout the park, the walking path. And each week have a different book for kids to walk to. They'll have the pages laminated and on that, and on the front side will be page one and two. Walk to the next page, three and four. So families can get out, read a book. And you know, he's, I can't remember his example, something like if Jack and the Beanstalk, you get to page five and six. Oh, and do fifteen jumping jacks. Some, nothing too strenuous for the families. But it'd be a partnership with the ISD, the Saginaw County Libraries. I'd reach out to Nanette, see if she wanted to participate. Uh, beginning June first, and he'd switch it out. There's no cost to the village. Um, just a good partnership to get kids out reading a book a, book a week. Um, mostly the classics for children age. I think he said six to nine or something like that. Very cool. So. Not sure if you were interested or think that is a good use of parks. But I thought I'd bring it forward and, and.
I surely do. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's on, you say Saturdays?
Uh, he, he'd leave it out. I said, do you want us to, like, is it our responsibility to pick up each night? He said, we're just going to laminate it, leave it out and switch out the books.
So he'd come like once a week to switch out the books?
Yep.
Jeez, they don't have to do anything.
Nope, so I have to be great.
It really, it really is good for our town and our children. You can't do much, anything better than learn, read.
Right.
Do we have, um, people renting pavilions still?
We do.
But these are not going to be involved with the pavilions at all?
Nope, just the walking.
Just the trail.
Yep. And he said even half the trail, kind of walk out. And this page up here.
Cut across and.
This page up here might be twenty-four, twenty-five, turn around, it's twenty-six, twenty-seven, and head back to the beginning.
Well, you might want to keep them away from the disc golfers.
Yeah. If he came out and walked it, this, this. And he's a, he's a good guy. Comedian hockey player that ends up in Saginaw. Really good guy. We have a good friendship. And, uh, glad he thought of us.
That's a good idea.
Pardon?
Did he play with the spirits?
I don't think so. I don't think he ever got that far.
Do we need a motion for this?
Or are you going to park work with that?
Well, they'd like, he'd like to know sooner rather than later. Uh, so I was hoping to get your approval and then talk a little into the parks next week.
Okay.
Uh, that way I can tell him tomorrow, yep, good to go. Uh, let's get it in and let's, let's get the signs up and get your books planned. And then I said, I said I'd like a who, what, when, why, where. It's something I can send to the board by Friday.
How about a motion with the approval of the park?
That, that would work. Little backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I make that motion.
If they agree. Just if they agree.
Yeah, if they agree. Yeah.
I hate to step on their toes.
Yeah.
I, I do too, but, um, I'd really like to see this.
It's kind of where the meetings went.
Yeah, uh, he called, you know, three o'clock this afternoon, so just.
It's a really good idea. I can't imagine they would object. No, I can't either.
Support or for the motion?
All support.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to departmental reports. First one is the DPW. How you guys doing, Don?
Just been busy the last few weeks, I guess. Um, uh, this week's been very busy with the beautification day. We're, we're working through it. Things are progressing and doing the best we can best. So we're trying to get things cleaned up for spring and.
Uh, Don and the guys have been going above and beyond. They're, they're reading water meters right now, but, um, as you know, the beautification day group is kind of very demanding and with a lot of requests. And, uh, we've kind of, I've kind of tried to be the point of contact to make sure communication is flowing, but they have three points of contact. And they're not all on the same page or will agree to something at one PM. Then I'll get an email at eleven PM that contradicts what we discussed and agreed to at one. And then at seven, I'll have a third one that contradicts both and they don't want that anymore. So we're going to, we got to really work on who we're going to listen to without offending anybody.
We're, we're trying to get them to realize there's kind of a chain of command.
And, and they're.
To steer them in that direction.
The other problem I have, and this is off the record, Tito. They want five yards of mulch for Dr. Klein's little bed there. Five yards. That is eighty-seven bags of mulch. I don't think the terminology they're using is correct either.
Their qualities.
So they'll say we need one, one bag of mulch or one yard of mulch for the whole park or something ridiculous. They're like, I don't think that's right. So Tito, bring them what you think they need.
Give them what they need, not what they.
Let's, yeah, let's go from here.
Not what they think they need.
They want a table hoes at the park. They need three or four.
So they've been going above and beyond. They've been in early. Uh, we're receiving a lot of requests. We're kind of doing a lot of work, uh, proactively to kind of mitigate because then then somebody else will come in and say, well, have you guys thought about doing this? Or when are you going to do that? Or what about this? And yeah, yes, yes, Jay, we'll get to it.
Mm-hmm.
But I appreciate all you guys' effort and trying to make this work and make it awesome for all the kids and, and really.
When they thank all their sponsors, they cannot thank the village.
They don't?
In their, in their letter, I do not see the village listed.
And they should be.
I'm not saying for the DPW, I'm saying for the village.
For the village in general, because.
What you contribute to them.
Mm-hmm.
They should be thanking the DPW too.
No, they can thank the village. It's fine.
No, it's because they think we're one of them.
You support them with a lot of money.
We don't support them. We belong to them. I'm telling you, that's how they look at it. They have for a long time.
That's just my rant.
I agree.
I'm sorry, but I just. You, you guys dedicate a lot of resources to them. I think this, you know, that. That's all I got to say about it.
Okay.
It's going to be a great day. Friday, seven forty-five.
The day after tomorrow, right?
We'll, we'll be there.
The after tomorrow.
I mean, it's, it's going to be so good. I wrote in Saginaw Parks just so they can have one section. They're all yours.
Yeah, I, I think we did the tally one time. What was the amount higher?
So in-kind donation from the village, not including the thousand dollars we budgeted, for Don and Tito and Bart to do what they do is about fifteen thousand dollars.
If you figure the equipment out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they, they ought to think about that.
So do they just assume that we're the village and so we're supposed to do that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that is it. And one member said, that was an okay event this weekend at the park. Does the village make any money off of that? So they, about five hundred dollars. That's it? And then I had him thinking, oh, they have no clue.
No, they don't.
But that's okay. That's why we're here. We're going to, this is for the town. This is for the residents. This is for people passing through.
I'm telling you, we've been part of that since day one.
Happy to be a part of it.
And it's my understanding that that still comes back every year to make sure.
He is back, he's been back every day this week.
Okay.
Yeah, I see this part.
And then he says, text me. And his phone is not for texting. But that's, that's neither here nor there.
But the event this weekend was nice because it brought so many people in.
I received a lot of compliments. Not one derogatory comment. Um, even, uh, a younger member of the village said, I've never seen that many people in town before. He said, I couldn't believe it.
Was that bigger this year than last year?
I don't think it was. I don't, I think it felt smaller though because of the bridge work, but it kind of kept it flowing evenly. So it wasn't all at one time. So I think that really helped. And I think having all hands on deck with the police department and, and better idea of where we're parking and using the rail trail to get through. But I, you know, like you were there, it, it was like one of those TV shows on, I don't know, was it HDTV or something like Chip and Joanna? Right. They had a line, the whole row of the park. And what they came out and yelled, are you ready to shut? Yeah, it was all the way down Sunview. The Sunview from the park. Everybody screams, yeah, like a TV show. They were, she was pumping them up. She was pumping them. It was good. So I, I'm excited. I'm happy. They're happy. And they had a deal with the alley. Bad river was packed. Um.
I was happy. I didn't twist around the corner. I'm on my way.
And as of right now, they're talking about coming back in the fall and maybe partnering for the old press, uh, fashion Christmas where Santa could be out there. And I said, if you guys come three times this year, you can light the tree. You can be that special guest.
There you go.
So it was a great event.
Sounds good. Okay, police department report.
First of all, that Saginaw ISD thing, um, heart absolutely conned us in. We maybe have a day that the police and the fire go and walk with the kids through the park or something, read a book with them or something. I'd be happy to. Yeah, do something like that. So let me know. We'll, uh, we'll be happy to get involved in that as well.
You made a good choice on the new fire chief, I think.
Definitely did.
I think you're doing very well with the kids in school. They, they really seem to enjoy talking to you.
Um, my, my granddaughter is nuts about you, so. I'm, I'm excited to think I'll go and maybe do a little chaperoning prom.
At the prom? Yeah.
So I, I was invited to go do that. And I don't know, I might go in like a dress.
Yeah.
And hair curled and freak them all out. They wouldn't recognize me. So we'll see, we'll see what happens on that night. But yeah.
Under cover.
Important just to keep connection, you know, with the kids and even the young kids reading and see law enforcement practices as they grow up. So just love that opportunity. So. And I had a, a great opportunity with Don's wife. I don't know if you guys experienced any of Donna's delicious treats, but they had a fire, um, alarm go off at the retirement home. And, and Donna heard from her home and she came over and, and she just loved on all those people. They loved her to pieces. It was just so wonderful. The total action, the fire alarm at the end of a real long COVID process. But we brought them all out and loved on them all and sent them all back in. And they just loved the peace out of Donna. So that was a pretty neat moment to see just that relationship and how important that is in this community and how much that happens. So that was just a really neat time as well. Ages are the matter.
I don't know.
That's not, that's not police stuff, you make that.
But yeah, well, I think anytime you can get with those kids and be something other than the chief of police too is a, a, a great thing to do. And, and those kids are all excited about their prom because they didn't handle them last year. So.
Yeah. And, and the parents putting it on was a huge, um, asset to the opportunity.
The town. I can't believe what the town gave. I mean, it was just unbelievable. So.
Where did they end up having it?
It's at the Glow.
Oh, okay.
I think it's Memorial, Memorial Day weekend, right?
It is a Memorial Day weekend and she got a really good deal with the Glow. So.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
And a lot of people are donating right now. The Lions Club are considering what to donate or how much to donate and a lot of.
Well, she got seven fifty from the snowmobile club.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I know. She's made over five thousand dollars towards it.
Who's, who's doing it?
Lori. My daughter.
Your daughter? Oh, really? Oh, okay. Your daughter, your granddaughter or?
She's a senior.
Is she?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Been a few years since I've seen you?
Yeah. Well, they're having two courts. They're doing it all up big time because they didn't have one last year. So there's a senior court and a junior court and, and giveaway prizes. They're trying to give them back the money they're paying for the prom and.
Oh, that's nice.
Um, it'll be nice. It'll be really nice. They're all excited.
Okay. Oh, that's nice.
And it's after school's out, so. They're doing everything the same weekend. The graduation, the prom.
Really?
Yeah. But it's not pandemic school. They don't have anything to do with it.
Why, why is that?
It's the liability. They don't want
Do that, yeah.
All the COVID stuff and stuff.
We can't do that. We're under mandates.
Yeah, they, they can't do that.
Mandates because of the virus?
Well, because of the number of people that will be there. I mean, they're making them work. It's a masquerade ball.
We used to have a prom right back this year.
It's a masquerade ball.
Is it?
So, um, yeah.
So I'm glad I'm not chaperoning.
Funny you say that. Jenny signed you up today.
Yeah, right. Me and her already did our time chaperoning when it was school sanctioned.
I should chaperone, because that's.
All your days coming, you ain't even stirred.
Yeah, yeah. It's coming all over again.
Please. And it'll be this point or not?
Oh, it will.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's move on to building inspector report. Just kind of dominated this. Are you there, Scott?
Yes, sir.
All right, you're up.
All right.
Questions, comments, concerns for Scott?
I've noticed.
Get off easy.
I've noticed that that house on Flint Street is starting to collect stuff again. Flint and, uh, Coal Street?
Rittenberg.
Yes.
Well, I'll check into it when I get back into town later in the week and, uh, we'll get a letter out on it. What's your address on it?
Oh, I used to have it.
We'll get it to you, Scott.
Okay.
Julie, Julie will work with you on that. She.
I regularly communicate with him and.
She helps him with his garbage and get in the trash.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I know which ones talk about six thirty-two.
Just needed a spark that there.
Okay.
Scott, did you figure out who has the commercial vehicles on Coal Street?
On Walnut Street, isn't it? No, they're on Coal Street.
I can hear you, Hart, but.
Did you figure out who has the commercial vehicles on Coal Street?
Uh, I do not. I haven't seen any on Coal Street.
Yeah, I think it might be Jeremy Werner. Right there, um.
It's across the street from the, from him that, that truck sits.
Okay, I saw it in Jeremy's yard the other day.
That's the one parked off, right out by the road.
Larry, Larry Fuller.
Larry Fuller. Yeah, that's his son, I think. He comes and stays there once in a while. I heard, I.
Okay.
Is it? Jesse Werner?
What'd I say? Jeremy Werner?
Yeah, yeah, we believe so.
Okay. I'll send him a letter.
Well, check it out for fun. I don't know if they're there all the time. Just maybe once in a while, but.
Okay. Well, I talked to him about it. He told me, like, and this was last year. I talked to him because it was there. And I was at his place. He wants to put a, uh, an addition on his pole barn. And I told him he couldn't keep the commercial building at his property overnight. And he told me he wouldn't. So if he is, well, we'll, I'll talk to him again. We'll get it taken care of. Anything else?
I don't think so.
I think we're all set, Scott.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
You too, Scott. Okay. Let's, uh, see, any public comment?
I would, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'm, I'll represent St. Charles Township.
And no, you've heard by now that the tri township fire board has hired a new fire chief. That was at a special meeting after their regular board meeting, about three weeks ago. And it is Mick Levens. I'm sure you've seen that. But they have three quality candidates and I guess I'm kind of excited because as a St. Charles Township, I also represent the village. I think we're gonna have a a much better relationship with communication, if nothing else, with the fire department, so and just from watching fire, I think there's kind of a new excitement in the fire department, I guess, is what I see.
Now, who's the new chief?
Mick Levens.
He's on your board, right?
Yes. Just lives on Grand Road, South County.
Yep, that, that horse farm.
Yeah, just in case you don't know, his mother passed away last week.
Yeah, she just passed away.
But that's, he's very qualified, seems excited to do that.
I'm hoping he'll bring, I think, I'm, I get money that he, he's gonna bring the department around a lot.
I think there's a new, just from my being a fire, there's, it seems like a new camaraderie and excitement.
I mean, they're doing breakfast and stuff up there again that they haven't done in years.
Yeah, it's, it's great to see.
He's really excited, I know.
Oh, I know he is. He's, he's well qualified too, trust me.
I told him he shouldn't run and he kept saying, no, no, no. And all of a sudden I hear he's in, it's like wait a minute, he kept telling me he weren't gonna do it.
Seems to have a lot of people pulling for him.
Yeah.
What I've told you, he's the second longest tenured fireman on the department currently.
I've known him pretty much the whole time I was on the police
That's what I was told. Other than Mr. D, he's got the longest.
Yeah, Harley, well, he, you know, he just retired, but he was on there for a long time too.
For the village DPW, I'm excited.
You being on there will help them figure out how to open up a hydrant correctly?
I, I, I think the communication goes a long way.
Okay. Especially during the colder months of the year.
No, I, I think we'll communicate much better than we ever did in the past. It's all about education. We all want the same thing, so
That's good, because there was a time we couldn't both use the same dumpster.
Even on the township side, whenever we can work with the village, we're gonna try to be mutually beneficial.
Good.
Well, I think they picked a good guy for the DPW, or the township supervisor too, so
We got a goofy budget here. It doesn't start till July, so I've already told Hart, we've, they've decided to donate a little more money to the park too and I, I stayed right out.
That would be nice again.
I stayed right out of it.
A thousand dollars.
We used to get six.
We're giving two fifty.
Two fifty, so
That's a step in the right direction.
We got six for years and years and years.
It's not just village, it's a part.
Well, we used to always go to their meetings and explain to them that the people in the village paid a township tax too. And the way we, we don't get anything from the township. So it would be great if they would funnel that back in the form of a park. And they always did. But then I think the park boards stopped going to the meetings. We used to get them from Brant and Fremont and Swan, well, not too much from Swan Creek.
The village residents pay every tax that any township has to pay.
Yes, we do, and the village one included too, yeah. It's not me, I pay this one.
But you understand
I understand how it goes, yes.
I, I would just add lastly that the Lions Club, we had our white cane stand in the road in the cold, it was thirty-five degrees and pouring rain. We raised twenty-eight hundred dollars and yesterday we elected the little committee that we're on to give away twenty-five hundred in scholarships to graduating seniors at St. Charles High, two one thousand dollars and one five hundred and that'll be announced tomorrow at seven o'clock at their event, so very exciting stuff.
I was gonna say, that's tomorrow night.
So happy to be a part of that and just wanted to argue about which student was smarter and better qualified. Meanwhile, I'm looking at their grade points thinking I could have never done that or are you looking at their test scores? Well, no. Well, we didn't even take the SAT, so what do you, give them a little credit. They deserve it. So that was fun.
Any more public comment? Thank you for participating. You think, Don?
Thanks for the answers, Don.
One more step closer to the crowd.
Your motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Support? All those in favor? Leading us close.
Thank you, everyone.